All right, Mr. Hinckley.
Here.
Here. Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. Platt.
Here.
Mr. Thine.
Here.
Ms. Hanning.
Here.
The Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Chair, I would offer one. I would offer. I guess I'd make a motion first. I move to approve the agenda, and I would also like to offer an amendment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda, and are there any amendments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to add item 13. We'll call it litigation update. Opportunity for us to get a short report on where some of these laws stand.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to add an item on litigation update under current projects. I guess we'll call that 12A since there is a 13 already.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. All those in favor of the amendment and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're back on the main motion. All those in favor of approval of the agenda, say aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries, and we are on to approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes of the January 12th meeting?
I had just a question. Just could ask that now. Done, right, Mr. Chair?
That's fine.
When we make corrections to the minutes, and I think we might have hit on that earlier, Mr. Gerch, they don't become public until we have approved them. So if there are corrections or something, then those get incorporated, and that's the one that goes forward.
Correct.
Thank you, that's all I had. I have no amendments. I would approve the minutes as distributed.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All those say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign. The Chair calls for any disclosures to be made now.
Chair? I'm happy to embrace Jason Watson as a personal friend, as was his father and mother before, so I would be reluctant to give two crossways with him. And we'll try to confine my comments if we get to that point accordingly.
Thank you. Are there any other disclosures? Bearing none, we will move on to item six, election of chairman and vice chairman. And the Chair has opened the floor for nominations for chairman.
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Commissioner Hinckley as chair, please.
Commissioner Hinckley has been nominated for chairman. Are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Mr. Kennedy as vice chair.
Mr. Thine has nominated Keith Kennedy for chairman. Are there further nominations? Chair, entertain a motion to cease nominations, and if you wish.
You're looking for a motion?
If there, we probably should do that unless there are further nominations.
Alright, formally, I move we close nominations for chair.
Is there a second?
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to close nominations for chair. And David, you'll have to help me a little bit here because I don't think we've ever, in my experience, ever had more than one nomination for chair. So how do we ballot?
I have no clue. It's usually you're always willing to take the job.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, Mr. Kennedy. I could withdraw my nomination if you wish, since we have no precedent for this situation.
I think we just make a motion.
Yeah.
On who to, yeah, who you want to nominate.
Yeah. Yep, we have two nominations on the floor, so all those in favor of Commissioner Hinckley as chair, please indicate by raising your hand. All those in favor of Commissioner Kennedy for chairman, raise your hand. And so congratulations, Bern, you are the incoming chairman. And the Chair will open nominations for vice chairman.
I nominate Mr. Kennedy for vice chairman.
Commissioner Kennedy has been nominated for vice chairman. Are there further nominations?
I'll move we close nominations for vice chair.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to close nominations for vice chair. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and technically, that's considered unanimous ballot then, when there's only one candidate. We'll go with that. And it's whatever you'd like to do, Bern. I can go ahead and finish this meeting and let you take the reins.
That would be fine with me.
Forgive me because I sometimes print these off at home, but I did not print this one off.
Easy enough, or the script?
The script would be great.
And let's put a little note to ourselves that maybe the bylaws could address how to do this in an orderly manner, because we were all stumbling around, right? Flag that.
What's that?
Well, that's just when we're doing the bylaws.
Oh, yeah.
We're talking about the election. It's all sort of a broad field. A motion that then brought before immediately, or is it valid, or whatever? So let's clarify that for ourselves.
All right. Our first public application is the Mecca Conditional Use Application, CU 0122. And first, we'll hear from staff.
All right, so the applicant's Mecca daycare located at 4935 Valley View Road. There is a conditional use to run a daycare in the home. Current zoning is small residential. Current use is a residential. There's a house on the property, and access is off of Valley View Road. There were some reviews received. Luke Hawkins, chairman of the Albany County Fire Department, number one, requests a whole water program consideration and if access changes are made, to consider fire apparatus egress improvements, and nobody else had any concerns. The applicable section of the Albany County zoning resolution are chapter five, section five, and chapter five, section seven. Findings necessary for approval is pursuant to chapter five, section five of the Albany County zoning resolution. Applicant has provided the required notice by posted sign publication answer by mailing. Pursuant to Albany County zoning resolution, chapter five, section seventy-five, the board of county commissioners must make the following findings, that the applicant has read such site plans and/or survey maps as required, that the proposed conditional use shall not harm the public health, safety, and welfare community, that adequate public services are available for the proposed conditional use without creating an undue financial burden on the county, and that the applicant has adequately addressed the potential impacts. Staff analysis. The applicant provided a complete application and has addressed the potential impacts this use may cause. This is in the protection overlay zone, but the buildings are existing and no changes are expected. The findings necessary for approval and applicant responses referenced in this report are adopted as findings, reflecting that the applicant has adequately addressed the specified impacts, and the same are incorporated herein. Conclusions of law. The applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. The staff recommendation is to approve the Mecca Conditional Use Application, CU 0122, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis findings of fact, conclusions of law as stated, and each are stated in this staff report.
Are there questions for staff from the members of the commission?
I have some questions.
All right.
You can go first, Bern. The first most procedural one in your script, you said the Chair will open the public hearing, and this isn't a public hearing, is it?
Technically, it is. Technically, this is the public hearing, but we hear from the staff first, then the applicant, and then the rest of the public.
So we are having a public hearing? Yeah, alright, that's just a small procedural question I have. Okay, on the staff report, the fire department gave us the request for a haul water program. So I've been wondering, could explain that? Is it something that we should consider as a condition? What, tell us about that.
I would say no, I wouldn't suggest doing it as a condition. They request the haul water program for, I mean subdivisions and stuff.
What is it?
What is what?
The haul water program.
That's the fire department, how they, for subdivisions, we require either a cistern in the ground or to pay into the haul water program. And so that, that's what the fire department would suggest most times, is paying into the haul water program. Which is basically how they, they like take it in their truck, so they pay a fee.
And since I'm the only one that has heard of this very much on the commission, yeah, the district charges an additional fee to help support their haul water program, where they have tenders to haul water out to more remote locations, as opposed to in the past, there are cisterns that are buried all over, but it's much more efficient with the haul water program, and it's been in place for several years now, where they've added equipment so that they can haul water out to locations.
Where they feel they might need extra water, alright. So why is that not an obvious condition to add?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm not even sure how they would choose to do this, because the haul water program is specific to subdivisions. This is an existing lot within a subdivision. So I think it may be just a matter of, I mean, Mr. Hawkins is not here, but I think he just must have misunderstood what he was reviewing, because I'm pretty sure that program's specific to the number of lots that are being developed, and there's nothing being developed here. It's just a different use on the property. So I'm not sure how, if we required it, I don't know how they would implement it, because it's not within their policy, what they're requiring.
So normally, that would come in with the subdivision.
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you. The other thing that the fire department corrected was consider egress improvements. Talk to us about that.
The roads are there, they're already maintained by a district.
And I guess my question, if he was here, was, was he referring to the structure or to the roads? To?
Egress?
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be my question for him, but.
Yeah. I guess we're just guessing what he's meaning with this.
Yeah. Yeah. Next question. We're up next.
Well, if I'd like to continue?
Oh, I thought you were done, Bern, sorry.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little troubled by them making a recommendation that we don't have any way to respond to, but, all right. In the economic section, the statement was made, no additional clients. I didn't understand that, that this is a new facility, yes.
Well, not exactly. They are moving from the city out to the county, and so they've been running a family daycare in the city, and so they already have clients.
So that comment is clearly irrelevant for us. We're being asked to have a daycare with X number of clients.
Correct.
Right, but they're telling you that there are no other incoming clients. We know how many clients there are. I mean, yes, there's.
The fact that they may have had thirty over in Cleveland isn't relevant, but, okay. Water quality was something they were asked to review. That sounds like an increase of their loading on their septic system. We know if it's adequate to take care of that.
I did look into the septic system. Ours, the way ours are, I guess, calculated is by bedroom, and their current system is fitting for that. Also, I believe they are pre preschool-aged kids, so I'm not sure how much of an impact they would have on us.
Do we know if they were starting from scratch, if the, if our septic system permitting authority would handle their capacity differently if they were applying as a daycare rather than as a residence?
If it was a daycare center, but that's different. This is a home daycare where it's just, they drop off kids at the home. I mean, honestly, it's not going to be any worse than the impact that my family has. I mean, but, but yeah. Like Joe said, like, everything's based on the number of bedrooms, and the primary use is still considered a single-family residence or a home, you know? So there's not really a way to calculate, you know, five little kids. I mean, that's not taken into the calculations, because the standard is the number of bedrooms.
And the five little kids speaks my next question, which is, with this approval, what's the, what's the envelope we're approving? We commonly find ourselves in a situation of approving a specific use, but in the process, permit something much larger. I mean, does this be five and not six? Is that their, their permit with the state, with, through the State of Wyoming Department of Family Services says that they can go up to ten kids? So that would be the outer envelope of what we are approving, would be ten kids.
Well, so that may be a condition that you'd want to put on the application to say that they not exceed ten kids, because that's what state statute says. In that way, that, that would be in our permit.
I think that's in state statute. Could you check that?
What's that?
The number of, number of children in a home-based daycare.
If it's not statute, it's in, I think it's in regulations through Department of Family Services.
We could make it a condition as you said. It's a backstop, okay. I guess, yeah, that's, that's all I had, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Platt?
So, I don't, is your, is your recommendation in staff report dated? And if not, when did you prepare this?
I mean, it was finalized and printed last Thursday. The Marie.
So was that prior or post receiving this letter from Rodin? And I apologize.
I didn't, I received the letter, I think it came in at like 10:00 PM on Thursday night. So it was even after I met with him?
withdrew recommendation, change based on anything I sent this letter?
No.
And going to the very bottom of the letter, I believe it's Brad Rodin writes, finally, please note, Mecca daycare's been operating at the address since Monday, January 31st, drop-off pickups are occurring daily. Do you know if that's correct?
I do not know if that's correct, but it is a concern.
And that's my concern, that's a problem if it's correct.
Right.
And I don't know how we could recommend approval.
That would be a question for the applicant, I would say.
Yeah. Well, I think we need to find that out.
So once you're done with your questions with staff, then?
Yeah. Yeah.
Are there any questions, either Ms. Hanning or Ms. Thine?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have questions for the applicant, but not for staff at this time, thanks.
Mr. Chair, this is Mr. Thorne. My question was on, and I apologize since I'm new and I may be misunderstanding how this goes, but there was one condition to deny on, and, and so I wasn't quite sure if I understood what, one of the recommendations, recommendation three was denied. Could you guys explain that to me?
Sure. On the, on the page where it says options, first is staff recommendations, and it recommends approval, but under item two, it gives the three options that the commission has for action. So first is approval, second approve with conditions, and third deny, and fourth table. So those are all separate. There's no, there is the staff's recommendation above, but then there are also the four action lines that the commission can take.
And then into deny option, it mentions failure to adequately address the impacts in the ACZR, chapter five, section seven. Is that the section about screening and buffering?
That is the section, that would include it, yes.
Okay, so you guys have reservations about screening and buffering of the proposed daycare?
No.
Okay. I'm getting used to how this works. I just want to make sure you understood.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Dave's gonna go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
I think you're gonna do it.
Okay, so are you looking at where it says deny, and then it has the subsection and everything?
Yes.
Okay, so, so that's just the general section for the conditional use? You'd have to fill in which subsection that you want to base your denial on. So that's not provided, so, yeah.
No, in that case, thank you for the explanation, and I would have a question for the applicant, but we'll wait for that portion.
Right. Chair, welcome the applicant to come forward, and as with all other witnesses, please either approach the lectern, which no one's here in person, or raise your hand, state your name and address, and applicant is welcome to go first here.
I'm Zibby Mecca. Our new address is 4935 Valley View Road.
Thank you, please go ahead.
I'm just up for answering any questions you have.
And I think the first question should probably go to Mr. Platt. And, and there was some question as to whether you've already begun operating at this location, and, and if so, what are the circumstances of that?
I have. I have four families that I do daycare for, and I brought my application in before the end of the year, and I didn't know it was going to take more than a month to get that approved. So these families would be without daycare if I wasn't watching their children, so.
Any follow-up, Mr. Platt?
No, it's fine.
Any other questions of the applicant? Mara, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Mecca, I just wanted to ask you some things about your DFS permit. Have you already had your new location inspected and your, your permit renewed or amended for your new location?
No, because zoning was something that I needed to receive before she was able to go ahead with all that paperwork.
So you, you have that in the works, though? It's, it's.
I do.
It's in, in motion?
Right.
And then, did, did you have a similar conditional use permit with the city when you were located within the, excuse me, city limits?
I did.
Okay, great, thank you very much. I, I just wanted to add, I guess in general, I used to sit on the City Planning and Zoning Commission, and you would occasionally see facilities like yours come through, and I know that everybody was very supportive of them. Everybody on, on the commission at the time, including myself, likes that there's that flexibility that people can find alternative daycare options in, in people's homes, in that it can provide income in an in-home business for somebody, and it provides a service to the community. So I'm grateful that the county allows these conditional use permits, and it sounds like you're trying to be in compliance with, with all the various things, and so I appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Thine, I believe you had a question as well.
I did, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Mecca, how many kids is that, four families involved?
There are five children that come, usually just four at a time.
Okay. And do you plan to expand, or are you happy?
I don't. I'm planning on retiring as soon as these children go to kindergarten.
Thank you very much.
I have no more questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Bern, please.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Thank you. Maybe you've got the answer to the, is your, how far does your permit allow? If you wanted to put in thirty kids, where would they, where would you be allowed under your daycare permit?
Oh, my permit only allows me ten, but I've never had that many. It's just that I've had the space that I could have ten, but I, at my age, I don't care to have ten kids.
And then, are you, have you seen the, the letter that your neighbor provided by way of comments, and their concern?
I have not seen that.
Oh, I don't have that in front of me. The one thing that I recall, and maybe there's, help me, they were concerned about parking and whether in the winter, there would be adequate parking without parking out on the street?
There, you know, it's only usually three families each day, and they don't all come at the same time and only stay for about five minutes, you know, when they're dropping off their kids or picking them up. So, so far, the only problem we've had was when one gentleman pulled off the side of our driveway to allow someone to come in, and he got stuck, and I had to help him get out, but other than that, we haven't had any issues.
Rodin's right. The current narrow driveway into 4935 Valley View Road constantly drifts with snow in the winter, which in turn has led to parking vehicles having to park on the shoulders of Valley View Road in order to access the property in response to that.
We haven't had that issue so far in this one month that we've lived here, and not even a month, couple of weeks.
May I offer a comment about that?
Certainly.
I went out to go look yesterday, and it's a perplexing road by the way. I don't see that as a problem. Thank you, that's the only question I had.
Thank you. Are there any other comments you'd like to make, Cindy?
No, I, I know four families that won't be very happy if I can't continue daycare.
Thank you very much. Hearing's now open to the public. If you wish to comment, please raise your hand or indicate so to staff here, please. And I'm assuming there's no public comment. There being no further public comment, the Chair will close the public hearing, and the Chair would entertain a motion regarding the Mecca Conditional Use Application, CU 0122.
Mr. Chair, I have motioned that we approve the application.
It's been moved to approve the application. Is there a second?
Any more second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommended, the Board of County Commissioners' approval of the Mecca Conditional Use Application, CU 0122, adopting and incorporating this staff analysis findings of fact and conclusions of law, as each are stated in the staff report. Is there any discussion by the commission before we hold the vote?
I have a question. Let's go to David. Is there a historical question about?
Is there a historical question about approving something like this where the applicant won't be seated? They're required by that activity, they're asking.
Honestly, yes. This is sometimes how we rectify situations, unfortunately. You know, the one good thing about this application is at least she's applied for it, and she's going through the process without us, you know, happy to say, you need to do this process now that you're doing this activity. It's not looked very favorable on. This is not the process we want to go through, but yes, we've done it in the past, so.
Hey, comments from the attorneys?
Yeah, I agree with David.
I would too.
That's all my questions. Bern, is your clarion of the nature of a conditional use permit? When Ms. Mecca retires, then this disappears. Is that my correct, my understanding of how this approval works?
So, Mr. Chair.
Bern, I, my understanding is that this essentially stays with the owner of the property. So this conditional use would be permitted until she either requested to just have it removed. But she has other conditions she'd have to meet if she wanted to go further on as well. But but if the property sold, why it would end. That's mine. But I'll defer over here.
Mr. Chair, under the Section Six, it's on page five dash three of zoning permits, conditional uses will expire one year after the use is abandoned. So it would, it would become void one year after Ms. Mecca's. I guess stopping. She were to sell to someone who may need that use.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's the, that's the only concern I had. I can support the motion. That understanding.
With those questions answered, chair will call roll. Mr. Hickley.
Aye.
Mr. Platt.
Aye.
Ms. Hanning.
Aye.
Mr. Stein.
Aye.
And Chair Kennedy votes aye.
Sure. Okay, so before we move on to the next item, we have, there's the Cotton Tel subdivision application we actually need to pull from the app, from here. We missed doing that, so I don't know if you want to just get to that point and then pull it. I don't know what the proper procedure is. They didn't have their notice report. The notice requirements weren't properly followed, so.
Okay.
So that's the reason for moving of the application.
We'll just, we'll just deal with that when we come to that.
Perfect, thanks. Yep, just wanted to bring that to attention.
Next, we have the Watson, Watson land use change application, LUC ten dash twenty-one.
All right. The applicant is Jason Watson, located at sixteen Artesian Lane. The request is to change zoning from rural residential to commercial. Current zoning, obviously, is rural residential. Current use is that there's drilling company on the property. There were some reviews that we received. Julie Matthews, county attorney, has no concern. Luke Hawkins has no concerns, is requesting the whole water program. And Y dot Ryan Shields has no concerns currently, but would have comments in the future if access to US thirty is changed. The applicable sections of the Albany County zoning resolution is Chapter Three, Section Five, and Chapter Five, Section Five. Findings necessary for approval pursuant to the Albany County zoning resolution, Chapter Three, Section Five. The Board of County Commissioners must make the following findings. The applicant has provided the required site plan, made a survey, and the applicant has adequately addressed the following impacts, as well as pursuant to Chapter Five, Section Five of the Albany County zoning resolution, the applicant has provided the required notice by posted sign publication and certified mailing. Staff analysis, the applicant has addressed the potential impacts the zoning change may cause, and has provided a complete application. This property is currently zoned rural residential, and a change to commercial should not have any effects on the surrounding properties as it has existed for years. The applicant is currently going through the boundary line adjustment process, and now would like to make the whole parcel commercial instead of it being half commercial and half rural residential. Findings of fact, the findings necessary for approval, and applicant responses referred to or are adopted as findings of fact that the applicant has adequately addressed the specified impacts, and the same are incorporated herein. Conclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. The staff recommendation is to approve the Watson land use change application, LUC one zero two one, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis findings of fact and conclusions of law as these are stated in the staff report.
Thank you, and first of all, right there.
Can I add to this, the staff analysis here? So the boundary line adjustment has not been, went through the, been approved yet. We're still waiting on some information from the engineering. I don't think it's going to be a problem. We already have the outline of what it's going to look like, and the boundary line adjustment is a exemption. So it's, it doesn't have to go through any big process. However, I did want to bring that up, that that has not been completed yet, so. What you see is what it'll end up being.
Any other questions from the commission? Bern.
Yeah. So I had, my head, this was grandfathered that we have an existing commercial use, and we're now going to change it to commercial. So just walk me through that. As I was looking at those maps, it looked like the boundary in question ran through the middle of the shop. So that was my first question to follow up on my earlier one is.
So what the boundary line adjustment is doing, if you look at the map that I made, the, and I guess I didn't really do well, a good job of something here. But the commercial zone property will be, like, this will be one parcel, right? So instead of having it half commercial and half rural residential, they're trying to make it just all commercial. But what is going on on that rural residential piece right now? Nothing. I, I don't know. I guess question I could ask the applicant. I'll do that. Then remind us what what goes forward from here, in that we're kind of catching up with existing use. Does he then need a zoning certificate or something? Or is this evident?
Well, if he, if he decides to build something on that property, that's when his own certificate would would kick in. He would need that. But right now, it's just changing the zone so that he can use that for commercial. And I can't remember.
They're just trying to come into compliance.
Well, I think he already complies, but I just, I don't, I don't know what, do you know what his future use was going to be? I don't know if someone's on here that's.
Well, Jason's on the.
Okay, okay, yeah. I think that's a good question for it.
Procedurely, it sounded like we were just trying to kind of bring things up to speed and put their certificate that didn't get passed that needed to be passed as well, just to make sure all our paperwork. Then unless you guys know, I was gonna ask Jason, what's the water hall situation was for the subdivision? Do you, do we know that? For that question for the applicant?
I, I'm, I don't know.
Yeah, on the whole water, I'm mildly curious if that's part of the cap page for the comments.
Could be, yeah.
Based on what we saw on the last one, so. Yeah. Other questions? Sure.
More quickly. My, my second, the question to staff, what's the, what's the envelope for permitting here? So this would be a larger commercial property, and Mr. Watson could come back and request additional. How would that work? Would we have an opportunity to review that? Jason decides to put in a cement factory on his, who expanded properties? Is that something that we see?
That would depend on what the use is. I mean, if it's just he's adding another building to put his equipment in or something like that, you wouldn't see anything. That's just a zoning certificate that they need for the building. Now, if he did to expand, decide to expand his business, and he did want to do something that goes above and beyond what what is allowed on the property, and he gets a kind of conditional use part, that would be when you would see something else. But on that, that piece of property that it's expanded to, they can do anything that's allowed on there right now with just a zoning certificate out, or this is, if this is.
Anything that's allowed in a commercial.
Commercial, so, correct, yes.
And then lastly, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to remind ourselves, the omitted criteria in the staff report reads, "The proposed zoning change generally follows the suggestions of the Albany County Comprehensive Plan, including but not limited to the long-range growth plan and the priority growth areas of Albany County Comprehensive Plan." Just so you know what would have been there had it not been excised. And that was my last comment, Mr. Chair.
Next question, Ms. Hanning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see. I'm trying to understand the lot line adjustment. Do you still end up with two separate lots with new boundaries? Or is it, is it combining two lots into one, if you will?
So what he's doing is, he has the, if you look at the map that was provided, either the zoning map, probably, yeah, the zoning map or the area map, the portion on the zoning map that's red, that's the property that exists today. Once he does the boundary line adjustment, he's moving that north boundary basically up to the, to that diagonal kind of north and south line, almost northwest line. And he will include that, that portion of the property into that. So they will be starting with two parcels, and they will be ending with two parcels. It's just, he's moving the line to, you know, up, basically, including that our property.
Okay, thank you for that. Also, Mr. Chair, I was just curious how you categorize this land use? And would, would there have been a way to approach this using, using a conditional use permit? You know, I share the concern of enlarging a commercial area in a rural residential area because of what could happen in the future if Watson drilling eventually closes and what other commercial enterprise could take over the property. So is there any way to address this through a conditional use permit?
I mean, they're trying to change the zoning, so I would say no to that.
What, just out of curiosity, what is the land use you would categorize this? Because it's, it's like they, they store equipment there and probably maintain equipment, but they're providing their service offsite.
I mean, I would say it's commercial, it's for a commercial, it's for a business.
Okay, thank you. Just call it, you would just call it a, a, a business, not, not many, it's definitely not manufacturing. I was just looking at the land use table, trying, back when I was wondering if there was any conditional use way of approaching this. But it sounds like it's, to fix the problem would have to be a zoning change. So thank you.
Any further questions of staff from the commission members?
Well, I just like a comment from Joe, see if I understand this correctly yet. It appears to me that the commercial zoning right now is vacant. And the actual operations are in fact a rural residential.
I think it's actually kind of in between.
Maybe in between.
Kind of like on the line.
But anyway, this is trying to bring the existing use into good forms, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seeing no other questions from staff, chair is opening the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the Watson land use change application, LUC ten dash two one, please approach the lectern or your computer and state your name and address. And we always offer that the applicant goes first. So, Mr. Watson.
Flint. Good afternoon, Council. I can address anything that we need to talk about this. We have tried to rectify a situation that has been persistent over years when Mr. Watson purchased the land from his, his father. And what happened was is that they didn't get a proper survey done, and the property to the, the north and Enlough Bridge, there was a, they wanted to have a buffer between Enlough Bridge to preserve them from any of that. So what happened was, is that the boundary line was not done correctly. And as you can see from the GIS and everything that we found, is that the line went right through the middle of Watsonwill Corporation. So to rectify this, we, we wanted to bring Watsonwill service into compliance with all the county codes, therefore being able to get them a substantial lot. And, and, I mean, the company's been on, been Watsonwill forever, so it's, it's basically just bringing Watsonwill into good forms with county and codes. So that is, that's, that's our process that we're going through right now.
Thank you, and well, I see one question here. Please go ahead, or.
Yeah, a question for the applicant, either their engineer or applicant itself. You mentioned the buffer between the Watsonwell commercial operation and that little bridge subdivision. Now, that is lost in this process. Is that a concern?
If you look at the GIS, you'll see that there is a corner of property that would be affected. But it is, it's owned by this person that has the lot to the kind of catty corner of it. So there's only one person that would be affected, and they don't even have a house close to that corner of, of the Enlough Bridge.
And the question for the applicant, as well as staff, we have, we received no adverse comments from the public. And I just have a curiosity. Do we know if the water hall program has been implemented for the Enlough Bridge subdivision? It's, it's not, on point, but satisfy my curiosity. Do we know what the water fighting situation is there?
That would not be part of this conversation, I don't think.
It need not be. I was just curious. Thank you for your indulgence. And then, I would be correct to understand there are no plans to occupy with additional buildings this newly zoned space? This is a status quo?
This is strictly a zone change, just so they can move, move, they can either store stuff over there, or they could do nothing to it, just, just so they're in compliance. It's all that they're looking to do, is just to bring their property into compliance with county regulations. So it's kudos to him.
Karen, that's all I have. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Chair will open it up to any other public testimony. Seeing none, there being no further public comments, chair will close the public meeting and entertain a motion from the commission for action on this item.
Moved to approve.
It's been moved to approve. Is there a second?
I second.
Been moved and approved to, moved and seconded, pardon me, to approve this application discussion from the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, this seems to me. I just wanted to say, this seems to me to be an effort to bring his situation into full compliance with zoning regulation. And I have to see that as a positive.
And, and I would also have to agree because I've actually gone through some boundary changes where we didn't have to do that. And it, it's still onerous anyway, even from, even if it's just a clerical error from a survey. So with that, if there's no other comment from the commission, I'd ask staff to call the roll, please. I guess I call the roll. I seem like I'm a rookie at this. I haven't been a person for two years.
Mr. Hinckley, I'll update as per my earlier disclosure. Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Mr. Platt?
Aye.
Mr. Thine?
Aye.
Ms. Hanning?
Aye.
Motion carries. And next we are to Summit View Estate Subdivision Application Final Plat, SD 10 dash 21. And staff report first, please.
All right, the applicant is Steel Surveying Services LLC, the owner is DQ Property Investments. The property is located at the northeast corner of State Highway 130 and Rainbow Valley Left Road. The request is to approve the final plat application and a subdivision permit, current zoning, small lot residential. There were some reviews. Albany County Fire Department, one. Luke Hopkins, Chairman, is asking to be cognizant of the size and weight of the fire tenders during the road construction process. He also recommends the whole water program. Karen Bowman, Senior GIS Analyst, has no concerns. Dory Ubersaw, Addressing Coordinator, has no concerns about the road name. And County Engineer Jake Snyder had some comments regarding the preliminary plat engineering report, final plat, and construction drives. But everything has been taken care of. The summary of subdivision permit requirements. Water will be supplied by one high producing well that is already existing on Lot 4. Easements are provided to the well for distribution. Septic will be served by individual systems. Each system will need to be applied for through the Albany County Planning Office. A storm drainage report was complete for this proposal and reviewed by Jake Schneider, County Engineer. Carbon Power and Light provides power to the area. Social Service is existing. One new road is being proposed, subdivision court. A draft covenant with a road maintenance plan has been submitted. It will need to be filed with the final plat. Confirmation letter for financial assurance has been received. Fire protection will be provided by the county, whether it be the whole water program or a sister and has not been determined at the time of writing. We are pretty sure it's going to be the whole water program. The fire department requested it. And the applicant has submitted a application to the fire department. We just haven't heard confirmation from the fire. Notice has been provided in accordance with the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Regulations. The information provided in the staff report shall be incorporated as findings of fact. The applicant is proceeding in accordance with the requirements of the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Regulations. Staff analysis that this subdivision is being proposed in a previously developed community. The final plat complies with the standards of the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Regulations. The lots will be accessed from Rainbow Valley Left Road by way of State Highway 130. And all comments from the agency have been addressed. Staff recommendation is to approve the final plat application and subdivision permit for the Summit View Estates subdivision final plat application, SD 1021. Based upon and incorporating the findings of fact and conclusions of law as stated in the staff report.
Questions of staff from the commission? Burn?
Just clarified, this thing's gone on for years, 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 as the applicant, I'm sure can tell you. There were these various comments from Mr. Gorman and Mr. Schneider. I believe you said, Joe, all of those engineering concerns have been adequately addressed.
Correct.
And then it sounds like our whole water programs are going to get off the ground. So then I would just like to reach to the comment to the applicant that your, your technical report was extraordinary. And we've, it was exemplary. If everybody hired the same consultant with their five feelings of it. So you, you've done us all a good turn. And I much appreciated the opportunity to review that piece of work and the quality with which you have done. So you can pass that along to your engineers. And thank you for that. That's all I had.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open it to the applicant and Mr. Palmer and Mr. Gallagher, I'm assuming are representing the applicant here.
That's correct. Good evening, Chairman Commissioners, Casey Palmer, West House Surveying Services. As you noted, Larry Gallagher, the project engineer, is also on the line. I'm sure he appreciated the compliments. We do a lot of work over here in Laramie County, but not so much in Albany County. But we, we definitely do try to set a high bar in terms of our competition and really making sure that all, all boxes are checked. So also as noted, you know, this was, the preliminary plat was approved several years ago. We've had a lot going on over here in Laramie County and have been really trying to get the, all the, all the things put in place for this project over here for, for, for this Summit View Estates. As David noted, we've contacted Luke Hopkins with the Fire District about joining the, the whole water program. And I haven't heard back from him, but I think, you know, that's the route that we're looking at going there. Back at the time of the preliminary plat, we had worked with Jim Beckman at Carbon Power, Suburban Propane, sort of all the utility providers, make sure they had what they need. Or if they needed anything from us, you know, in terms of installing infrastructure required for these additional lots. The new road, the cul-de-sac that comes off of Rainbow Valley is about 260 feet long. That'll be a new construction. And then there are some improvements shown on those engineering plans, which will be to, to Rainbow Valley Lodge Road itself. We've also coordinated back at the time of the preliminary plat with the Rainbow Valley Special Road District. Prior to the dedication shown on this plat, that district was owned to maintain that road over easements across several property owners. So this subdivision consolidates that into a publicly dedicated road. For the most part, if you've looked at the map carefully, towards the west end, there's kind of an ownership issue that we couldn't do anything about. But there is a full 80 foot corridor through there and we've dedicated 80 foot wherever we could. In addition to that, you know, we've submitted a landscape plan that's in conformance with the Albany County Code. I can't remember the section off the top of my head. I had a note here somewhere. But anyway, that we've clustered that landscaping to try to ensure survival there. And that'll be constructed right there along the highway at the, at the south edge of the project. So I, I think that's about all I have. I'd be happy to address any questions you might have in regards to the subdivision project.
Thank you. Questions from the commission?
Mr. Palmer, thank you, Mr. Chair. My question was, just first of all, I have to echo Commissioner Hinckley's sentiments. Heck of a report. Great job. You, you talked about an alternative leach field. Is that a leach field that will replace the primary leach field over time? Once the primary leach field is, has reached its lifespan? Is that what that meant? Or was that just an alternative location?
The chairman, I'll turn that over to Larry Gallagher, Summit Engineering. I mean, that, that report is his, is his doing. So I'll let him answer that. But there, there's a requirement in Laramie County to, to provide basically enough, enough room to have two septic leach fields. And it's also just to get best practices so that in the event of a failure, a new leach field can be constructed to replace the old one without having to do any abandonment of the old one. But Larry, are you, you want to unmute yourself and maybe respond to the chairman's question?
Yes, I'm Larry Gallagher with Summit Engineering. I'm sitting here with Dan Gregg, the developer of the project here in my office. On the septic, that was the chapter 23 report done by John Wedsteen with Engineer Associates over in Laramie. He did that report that identified the septic systems and the susceptibility of the site to take septics on. So he's not here to answer that question, but I don't believe there was any reference to an alternative septic system unless there was aeration if there was problems in the future. I don't recall him saying anything about a modified septic system or anything along those lines.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. That was my interpretation as well. And I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly.
Are there any other, are there any other questions of the applicants? Thank you, gentlemen. If you'll hang on, if there's other questions that come up from other public testimony, why, we'll have you back. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this application? Seeing none, and no further questions from the commission. No further public comment. The chair will close the public hearing. Chair would entertain a motion on this application.
I move to approve.
It's been moved, there are a second? And seconded by Mr. Hinckley. Discussion by the commission. Seeing none, I guess it's, I don't know whether it's my turn to call a roll or David's, but we'll get it done.
Mr. Hinckley?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Mr. Platt?
Aye.
Mr. Thine? We can't hear you, Thine.
Apologies.
Aye.
Ms. Hanning?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Larry, it's good to see you after 26 years. You'll eventually remember where it's from.
Great to see that well finally get some use, you guys. It's been there for 22 years.
The next item that was on our agenda is the Cottondale Subdivision, which staff has asked to have removed from, from this agenda and moved to next week. And did you have a question or comment or?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was disappointed in that packet that we did not see the chapter 23 report. What was provided was simply the letter of no adverse opinion from DEQ. So particularly since we were taking a breather on this, I would like to have the opportunity to review that when we come back.
Which report?
The chapter 23 report with DEQ.
For who?
For Cottondale Subdivision. I believe that report is required as part of the preliminary plat application and it was not provided.
The DEQ report? Are we talking?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought there was.
Well, there was a letter, there was the letter from DEQ having reviewed the report, but I didn't see the actual report. Now perhaps I missed it.
Being stolen, Harry. Where was that at?
New York City.
New York.
Yeah, I guess you're right.
I don't know. Did it not make it into your packet?
Oh, it's Summit View.
No, it's Summit View. Oh, what are you talking about?
Cottondale.
Cottondale. Oh, okay. I'm off, I'm off. Yeah, we'll get it in there. So you have it. So we got another month.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we are on to current planning projects. The first item there. No, not yet. That's, that's.
What, did any, any of them get stopped, Harry, or?
Bonnie? I got it. Thanks.
I don't know how to use this one, but I can use all the.
Determine 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, meeting times. What's your pleasure?
This time works okay for me.
It's fine for me also. Yeah, we've had this big compromise between accessibility and interruption of work day. And I guess I'm, I'm comfortable with this as something of a compromise. Have you guys had public comment one way or another? I mean, we're trying to basically accommodate with ourselves and our public.
I haven't heard anything from you.
Yeah, I'm not unhappy with this. This, I like this better, Mr. Chair, than two o'clock. We may go into supper, but I think this works for me.
And I, I like five o'clock because if we needed to, we, we would have time for something more involved. And, and we could also tend to more routine matters first when, give the public time to get back from work as well. So I, I like the five o'clock, particularly if we still have the Zoom option. And it looks like that's going to be the foreseeable future.
Room's set up for us. So if we're going to meet here.
Yeah. Think a motion would be in order though, because we technically need to set it for the rest, either the rest of the year or portion of the year.
Through January, please.
Through January.
Well, yeah, and let's take up the Zoom, this second piece is the format of our meetings. I, I would echo your thoughts, Mr. Chair, and welcome input from our fellow commissioners. I, this is the first hybrid meeting we've had. Now, we aren't inviting the public to attend, but, but electronically, so it's slightly different than county commission. But again, I'm not that happy with that, but others feel differently.
Call that a motion?
Well, I'll make an emotion.
As long as the operator knows how to work this. Good thing we got a good IT staff, so.
All right, I'll call for that emotion, Mr. Chair, that we schedule our meetings at five o'clock on second Wednesdays through the end of the year, including next January. And that unless we decide otherwise, we will do a bit of hybrid in-person Zoom format. I second that.
Any further discussion from the commission? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Planning projects update.
All right. So what do we got going on? The Natural Resource Management Plan, that's moving along. We have a draft as the stakeholder committee or kind of what we call it, but the, we very few group has a draft of it to start looking over. And we're going to meet at some point. I think it's later this month.
February 17th.
February what?
17th.
February 17th to go over that. We'll get that all together. And next month you will see it at your meeting, as well as the board of county commissioners will see it. And then we're going to set up a public meeting and put it up for public comment for, I think, 30 days. For, so folks can make additional comments and then incorporate all those comments. And then the board will have a chance to, to review it and again, and hopefully approve that, that plan. So, so that's where we're at. We're moving it along pretty quickly. So it'll be done, I think, March 20th is when we're supposed to have a final product from the consultant. So that's where that's at.
So could I just, a question on that one?
Sure.
All right. So the committee and, and Fisher Hanning is, is on that committee. So certainly welcome any thoughts that she has on that. But I guess if I've understood from the program he lined out would be, we will see it at our March meeting. But then if we have comments and so forth, those will be reserved until the public comment period.
No, you can make comments at that point and they will incorporate your comments from that meeting.
But then, it cycles. So if we have something we want to change, then will that be changed before? But then, uh, it's looking at cycles. So if we have something we want to change, then will that be changed before it goes out to public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the idea.
Okay, the way you described it was us and then it's released. So there will be this iteration through us if there's anything we want to change.
Yeah. So you guys can make suggestions or whatever, and then they will incorporate those. Then it goes to the board like the next week and they can, they'll incorporate those before we send it out to the public. So they're getting, everybody gets a first blush. You guys and the board and county commissioners. Um, and those, those comments will be incorporated. Will we be happy with it before we send it out to the county commission?
Sounds like not quite.
Who?
So if we get it through the S P and Z and we say we want major changes made, then do we see it again before it?
No, you get, you get one chance.
Yes. Okay. All right. I just want to be clear on the sequence so we can plan our march accordingly.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I, and I don't know if I discussed this the last meeting. I was a little confused on the process because, um, like I mentioned earlier in our work session, this goes through a different process than like a comprehensive plan. So, um, it's not, I guess in a lot of counties, they don't even include planning and zoning, but obviously that's important to our county. We'd like you guys to provide your comments. Um, and you know, your expertise there too. Um, so, so we won't have like a public hearing per se before planning and zoning. I mean, it, it's more, we, the, the the public comment period will be when we have kind of the hearing, um, for people to comment. And even it doesn't even have to have a, what the statute says is it have to be, has to be done in public meetings. It doesn't give us any hearing requirements or any. But, but we, we wanted to plug you in there so you guys have an opportunity to comment as well. So.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions on that? Uh, next was.
We've got more.
Yeah.
Updates.
Yeah.
So we're doing the cap update, um, the Casbrock Protection Plan update. Um, so right, they, the consultant has went through and reviewed the, the two caps, compared those, the county cap as well as the city cap. Um, and provided us a technical memo on that, uh, just to show that the differences, um, and similarities, which there's not a whole lot of differences. I mean, I think we've done informal reviews of it before. Um, and then we're actually meeting tomorrow um, to go over that memo and to, to continue to get more information from the consultant. But they're, they're doing a lot of them. Right now they're doing that collect the data, look at it and give us analysis of it. Um, and then they'll start working on more of the plan, plan stuff here probably in the coming months. Um, I'm not sure exactly what point, I mean, at some point that will be appearing. We'll have to do before you guys. Um, and you'll be way, way more involved in that than, than like the natural resource plan. So, um, so that's where that one's at. Any questions on that one?
May we see that deck now?
Absolutely. Well. I think so. I, I got it in my email. Anything I get, I think it's probably.
It's coming to us eventually. This gives us a, yes, just get a, see where it's coming from.
Yeah.
I'm not committing to anything, but, but sure, send those on or out.
Yep. And then the last one, um, is the, well, the last one I'm thinking of, I don't know. The other plan we're doing is the, um, the joint, uh, growth area plan, which Mister Healy is on that with you, okay? So, um, he kind of already has the insider scoop on this one. Um, we just held, um, a, uh, interviews and, and we had two different applicants for, um, for proposals to, to help us with that project. Um, we've considered or came up with one, um, and that's going to be approved by the board of county commissioners and city council. I mean, it's not, I don't know if it's going to be approved, but it will be before city council, board of county commissioners for approval next Tuesday. Um, and then if that's approved and then the contract signed, then we'll start that process and get going on the joint growth area plan. So, um, so yeah, that's all.
They called it the GAN.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. What are you saying? I was like. And I was like, oh, okay.
Uh, let's see. The next was the item added to the agenda. So let's see. That's, that might be an attorney if we're talking about litigation.
Yes. Um, so, uh, I need Mister Chair. Uh, Mister Chair, uh, to what extent would you like?
Well, I, I think Mr. Curran shared with us that the recent, uh, filing was 5800 pages or something. So it's fair as that. I guess I was just wanting to keep track of, of timeline, what, what's happening with, uh, some of their, some of those may come back to this commission depending what the court decides. So, yeah, I was just interested in, in myself and my colleagues being aware of of how those are progressing. In my mind, those are the, or the challenge to the county's decision on Roger Canyon zoning change. And there are two, uh, proceedings, uh, involving the recent update of the Casbrock Protection Plan. So those, those are what I had in mind, but I just thought I'd.
Okay.
And then also the timeline and what's being filed and, and what would our access to those filings be? Just where are we on that? Matt, I've got a blank slide here.
Suggest you start with a general review of timeline and.
Yeah. So beginning with the commissioner's decision and. When was the Ivanoff decided?
June.
June, um, and 21. We, uh, have had eight different appeals, um, concerning six decisions made by the board of county commissioners uh, for plan or for zoning or land use decisions. Um, the first was a denial of a subdivision permit. Um, that has been decided. That was, um, subdivision applicant was, uh, Mary Ivanoff. Um, and that has been remanded or sent back to the administrative agency, which is the commissioners because uh, Commissioner Ibarra's, uh, microphone was not working at that meeting. So her, the motion that she made, which was adopted to deny the subdivision permit was inaudible. So the court found that it did not have a sufficient record upon which to base, um, essentially Commissioner Iberas decision. Uh, so that has been remanded only to the county commissioners uh, in order for them to make fuller findings as to, uh, why it is denied. Um, secondly, in July, the, uh, Railtie Wind Energy Project, which is on the north side and south side of Railtie are tie siding. Um, the W wind energy conversion system permit was granted by the commissioners. Uh, Monahan Farms appealed that and as did I think about like 49, uh, landowners in the area. Uh, we have filed our response brief on that. Um, and they filed their reply. So all we are waiting for is, um, uh, Judge Crickens order. So, um, and I guess Mister Chair, I whether it comes back to planning and zoning, uh, depends specifically on, uh, the court's order. Um, there was one instance where it did have to go back through the entire process again. I'm not sure if that is likely to happen in any of these. Um, may, well, maybe the APOZ amendments, but, uh, so we also, and then our third appeal was on Roger Canyon LLC. Or they were.
But it got kicked.
That's right. So.
This is hard to remember.
Yeah.
There's a lot.
Uh, Ms., Ms. Curran just, uh, wrote and filed our, uh, response brief in that last.
15 days ago because we just got the reply.
Oh, and we just got the reply brief. So it could be another month or longer, uh, for the court's order on that appeal. Um, and that was for a zoning change denial by the commissioners. Um, next in two Mondays from now, uh, I will turn in the response brief for the Windmill Acres subdivision, which was, uh, it's, it's in the area south of city limits in between I-80 and, uh, well, yeah, the city limits off of Vista Drive, uh, to the west of Vista Drive.
Adjacent to the Ivanoff.
Adjacent to the Ivanoff property. Um, that has been an ongoing, uh, case since 2020. Um, initially it was approved by the previous county commissioners. Um, ultimately it got appealed, uh, for lack of findings of fact. And then it was, uh, by stipulation, the commissioners and the opponents agreed that there were findings which were required to be made, which were not made. So sent back through the entire process once again. I doubt that that would happen, uh, once more. And then thirdly, or well, fifthly. We have the, uh, appeal of the APOZ, which is the Aquifer Protection Overlay Zone. Um, amendments which were passed November 11th, I believe is the exact date. Uh, that was appealed by the longest list of landowners that I've seen in the catch-up, uh, thus far. And then also, uh, the various entities that compose, uh, warm livestock. Um, we have, we turned in the record, the administrative record on that last week or the week before. Uh, so we have not received an opening brief from petitioners or no really. Um, yeah, that's still a very ongoing process. Uh, lastly, there is McKinney Construction LLC, which was a subdivision permit conditionally approved by the county commissioners. Uh, and the condition that was imposed was they have to, um, resolve the access issues, uh, that they have with the city. And that we have not turned in the administrative record yet. Um, and interestingly, that has been assigned to Judge Peasley out of, uh, Converse County.
And that is because, um, Dwayne Toro has property that also accesses the same road that we conditioned our approval of the McKinney subdivision on. He has filed a lawsuit against the city that is pending in district court right now. So because of the timeline of this appeal process, Judge Crickin didn't want to make a decision on this one while she has that pending case. So this has been kicked to Judge Peasley. Aside.
Um, yeah. So, uh, just a, a co- a common theme that is running through these is, um, the sufficiency of the findings that are required to be paid under our regulations. Uh, as you've noticed, you know, for, I suppose each area of application that you're deciding on, there are required findings and legally it's, it's important that those get laid out specifically, especially in the case of a denial. Um, statutorily, you're required to specify to the applicant what the reasons, uh, for the denial were. So. Is that sufficient?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Thank you. And I, I appreciate the, the final round, because that's something that, that we all face. And the parallel story is, uh, we have line of due, as I was referring to earlier, but we need to exercise that with discretion. And explain it in clear terms, what it, what it is we're up to, uh, both ways.
Yeah.
Uh, as I, some of you may have followed a recent case in Sublet County. Interesting in this, it's a challenge to the denial of a zoning change because it was inconsistent with the comp plan. Now, maybe the courts will throw that out, but just to remind ourselves that, that we have an applicant that we can either approve or deny. But then we are also under the scrutiny of the neighbors who made an objection to that, that happening. So our obligation to pick on these zoning things is not only to the applicant, but to all of the neighbors who we've all heard it a million times. They come in and say, wait a minute, I thought I bought into a place that was zone X, and now you're changing that. So there are many interests out there that, that we have the challenge of trying to balance in a, in an articulated and legally defensible way. So, thank you.
I mean, I just add to that conversation is, you know, when we're, you know, staff's going to re, provide you a report, you know, and it's going to have findings for our rec, that kind of back up our recommendation. If you guys go against that or were whatever, um, it just seems like when we'll, we'll get a meeting going and it gets a little contentious or whatever, or maybe not even contentious, but just like, uh, people are passionate about it or whatever. Sometimes we're just like, okay, well, um, move to approve. Okay, second, we're done, you know? Instead of saying, okay, let's, let's sit back. Looks like this is how it's going to go. Let's come up with some findings and do that. And I, and I've seen that happen, not, not so much on this board, but maybe like for the county commissioner board, it's just like, they make a motion and it's done, get out. Um, so don't feel bad about just like, okay, okay, guys, this looks like what we're going to do. Let's, let's take some time and let's come up with some good findings and, and staff and your attorneys, all of us will be here to help. But it finds, even if it's against what we, we originally, you know, recommend, we're here to help and make sure that these things are defensible. Just like we are to, you know, promote what we feel is, is right too, you know? Um, but we're here, you, you're here to work for the county and you want to make sure things are defensible. So.
And that speaks to what is our role. County commissioners have a huge agenda and so if we can help them.
Absolutely.
As, as you suggest, then we are doing our job as well. So, thank you.
All right. Uh, the next item on the agenda, the next meeting will be March 9th, 2022 at 5:00 PM. And we will be here in person and on Zoom. Uh, and next citizen comments on non-agenda related topics.
I don't see these. Well, there's just Bonnie's on.
Yeah. Bonnie just likes our meetings. Uh, with there being no further business to conduct, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Sir, a second? I'll take that for a second over there. And with that, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Six twenty-nine.